All right, so people are still filtering in quite a bit. Give another minute or two. Yep, still more people coming in. Standing room only. We probably have this in the school, except they're having a rehearsal in the school. Maybe the next one, the school. So I'm gonna open this informational meeting on April 29th of 2024, which has been posted in three public places and on the website and emailed to interested parties, so we can... It's a legally warned meeting. That is basically informational about the whole topic of what to do with the former high school building. We have to give a lot of thanks to the committee that stepped up and helped the Select Board investigate possibilities and gather information. It's been four years? I think four years we've been studying on this. Pat's been really involved with that committee, and she can speak to the extent to which they've dug deep about what are possibilities. It's not the only possibilities for the school. That's we're here to gather your suggestions, impressions, feedback. We're not making any decisions. Early on, the Select Board decided that this is not a decision the three of us are gonna make. This is a decision that the town is gonna make. So it's we're going to have a vote. It's been kicked off down the road a while. It'll probably happen this summer sometime. We have not set a date, but as more things have unfolded, like the analysis of the, you know, the, any kind of contamination in the building, we just wanted to make sure that as much information was available as possible for you people to vote on this. And we get to vote too, but on what to do with this building. As we know, it was not necessarily the desires of the town to close that building. This was forced upon us by the state, you know. It was built to be a school. My personal feeling is that it should be a school, but that's neither here nor there. We, you know, maybe that's down the line. But the committee is not only investigated options and possibilities of how it could be repurposed, but they've also succeeded in finding money, a fairly significant amount of money. The analysis for the initial stabilization of the building to address critical needs like the heating system and the HVAC and the roof is, what, just over $3 million? 3.1 million dollars, I believe.
Plus windows and doors and other aspects in that.
Yeah, sundry. And with a 35% inflation adjustment figured into that. So it's an educated guess about what it would take. And this by no means what it would define what the building needs. But this would make it bring it current and address a lot of the undealt with maintenance that has happened over since the '70s when it was built. So what we're gonna do, we have so many people in here. We're gonna hear from people in the room first, and then we'll move on to people on Zoom. And we'd like to keep it down to like, you know, three minutes of conversation or talk. Really encourage you to listen to what people say. I know a lot of people have very specific things that they wanna say, and we'll get those out. But also, this is to educate and be open to hearing what people say. Does, what do you guys, do you have anything you wanna add to this?
There are several. We have Vic and Catherine here, which have been spearheading this project since we asked them, what do you think we could do with the building? And they stuck with it through all this time. And then, and then we said, well, how can we achieve the goal? After they had the meeting, where the townspeople all got together and put their wish list together on what the building could become for them. And then, then we charged them with trying to figure out, how could we make that work? So the committee became a funding-seeking committee and went through a lot of different processes. They're now very knowledgeable about floodplains and Act 250 and contamination and heavy umbrellas and all sorts of letters that, you know, the letters are endless.
See, it's a school.
So these two folks are the ones that have been with it all along. I've always done my best to join in with their progress. They also have subcommittees of some people that are also in the town, which they may call upon. And so we can take it from there. A lot of the questions you may or may not have could be posed to Vic or Catherine or the Select Board, or you could just voice your concerns to each other without yelling.
I think one other thing that's important is this is not a yes or no vote for this building, as far as I'm concerned. It's really what do we do with it? At an honest appraisal of it, what do we do with it? Whether it's a school building or a town-owned building, how do we deal with it? And if the Select Board is put in the position to deal with it, it's gonna be a real nightmare for three of us to handle. And if the town office is gonna be the one that's gonna be responsible for the paperwork, it certainly isn't gonna be to their advantage. It's certainly gonna put a lot more stress on their job. So I think we, an honest discussion needs to take place on what we can do with it, how it can work, or if it can't work. But we need to be honest with ourselves about it. And that's really about all there is to it. But a yes and no vote is not gonna solve this thing. It's not gonna put it one way or another, so.
That just starts it.
Right, exactly. So we need to defuse that and make sure that we're not trying to fight each other here about that. We just need to understand, is it gonna work whatever we do for the long term of the benefit of the community?
All right, Larry, you can start off.
Real quick, what's the final cost of this building? If it's $3 million to stabilize it, what's all in?
We don't have a final number on that. $3.1 million was estimated as in 2022 to upgrade all those systems, the building envelope, the heating system, fire alarm, windows, doors, et cetera. And some...
What's left? That's gonna come up.
That's the envelope of the building we're...
Well, and some interior work and some handicap accessibility improvements. But until we get a little deeper into the actual occupancy of it and learn more about how the building would be used, there's more to come. And also, I just would reiterate that that's a 2022 number. Beginning of construction in 2025, that's more money just from inflation. So there's more to be learned about how much it's gonna cost and what exactly additional work needs to be done.
Frank, and then Jeff?
I just wanted to express a word of thanks to the folks who put together the package for Senator Sanders, such that he came through with a near mark of $2.3 million for the town of Rochester to repurpose its old high school building into a community center. And I'm sure that's, I don't know, I'm sure Catherine had a lot to do with putting that package together.
Probably about 99.5%.
It's really a team effort. There is no one person. It's a total team effort. And it has to be a town, a town effort, a town project now. It's something that if the town votes for, we will go forward with it. But we recognize this is not a Vic and Catherine in the steering committee. We've done what we've done to now, and we are extremely lucky to have the support of Senator Sanders. And the state agencies, we're on all their radars now, and they can't even believe that such a small town got so much money. And so, but that's because Senator Sanders did call us and speak with us. He loves this project and he loves this town.
So I'd like to make an interesting point here that this money that has been accessed remarkably so is because it's been applied for through the town, through the municipality. A school district was not able to apply for that. And if there was the eventual, what we're looking at, if there was a nonprofit organization formed to run this entity, whatever it is, they would not be able to apply for this. So what the town would be, in my understanding, would be a transitory vehicle that can access money and then the project can move forward. I talked with folks in Wilmington who have gone through this process with their high school, and they ended up not, the town did not buy it, but they sold it to a 501(c)(3) corporation that formed to take on the building. And consequently, it's been a long lingering challenge to access the money to do the upgrades that they have done to the building. So the fact that the, you know, the town has the opportunity, it's not decided yet. This is still gonna be a vote. You know, if the town votes that we don't wanna buy the building, then this money goes poof.
This town, this money is the town's. It was passed into law on March 9th by this Congress remarkably. And we have five years to spend the money. So I think that Nancy Woolley was concerned about the length of time we have to spend the money. We have five years to spend the money. And that gives us time. And we're also raising additional money as we go along. We've also established a 501(c)(3). Well, it's a nonprofit now, and we're filing with the IRS, the Valley Hub Inc. That's Vic's project. And so we'll be able to raise significant more funds. We have a community development block grant right now being reviewed for a half a million. We got a $300,000 anonymous donation for someone who is very grateful to the town. This was a code for all the town has given to them, and they wanted to give back to the town. And so I think there is interest, and I think there is funding that we don't even know about that's gonna be coming into this town. But that Sanders money passed into law for Rochester. It is Rochester's money. And if by some miracle, we upgrade the building without spending the 3.1 million but less, it's still the town's money. No one's gonna ask you to refund the money. So that, I think, is kind of a reassuring fact.
Walter?
I never hear about the flip side. We always hear about how much it's gonna cost. We never hear about how much it's gonna cost if we do nothing.
The estimate to tear down the building was about $1 million, which there's no grant money for. We'd have to...
So that goes on our individual taxes for the next 20 years, as if you're buying a new school. A million dollars, 20 years bonding for it. As opposed to grant money, which is a gift, so to speak. Which we've done at the federal level already, so it's a nice way to get money back.
One way of looking at it.
But in the back, Freya, you had a question? Oh, and I'm sorry, Jeff, you have your shirt down there.
I guess we have three choices, perhaps more. If we repurpose the building, it's $3.1 million. If we don't repurpose the building and we decide to tear it down, that's $1 million. If we don't do anything, what happens then? Do the school districts Rochester and Stockbridge continue to support the school financially?
It is, it's a school building, you know, it will remain to be so until they either sell it to us or someone else. What they would do, if they did put it on the market for a while, or tried to...
They tried to. They didn't really find a realtor that wanted to pick up a 30,000-plus-square-foot building.
Yeah. Should shed some light on that.
Right, no, everything you're saying is exactly correct. Should we come back to the third option, that it's back in the school's hands to decide what they need to do? Then it's gonna be the school board that should need to sit down and really analyze what we can do with it. We don't have a lot of options. We're in the business of educating kids, not in the business of taking care of an abandoned building. So the conversation would come back to the school board to figure out what the best path forward is. But like I said, our commitment is to educating kids.
And that same argument goes along with the town. We're not in the real estate business either.
Or the name landlords.
So Catherine mentioned that the nonprofit entity has been formed. It's called Valley Hub Inc. We have initial seven board members. We'll be looking for additional board members. We have officers, we have bylaws. The bylaws say specifically that the purpose of the organization is to take responsibility for the building on behalf of the town. And if the town so chooses and the entity is able to accept, to take ownership of the building. Now, right now, this entity is just getting off the ground. So we can't do that today, but there would need to be a period of time where the money gets flowing, the board gets developed, the capability of managing the building gets developed, which means getting a project manager, which we could probably get through grant funds. And so we don't wanna see, if this goes forward, we don't wanna see the town staff and Select Board all tied up in managing that building. Somebody's gotta make sure the plumbing works and the rent gets collected and everything works well on the building. But we don't envision that happening with the town staff. It's just not reasonable.
The issue with that is only that the grant will have to be administered through the town officials, and that'll follow on the town employees.
In the end.
We have significant money that is geared towards Two Rivers for grant administration. So, and we are also talking about pulling out some of that money to go to the town as well. So it's worked for our planning grant. Two Rivers did huge amount of administration and worked with both of you, and it worked well. And then we all worked as a team. And I also wanna do a shout out to Jamie Canarney and the school district, because Jamie has also been working collegially with us, we're meeting with Pat every two weeks and trying to solve every problem together. It was the school district that paid for the floodplain mitigation installation that has now happened. And so, you know, it's really been a joint effort in a lot of ways.
So Freya, you had your hand up in the back there?
I just had a question about the money that you've secured. You said if it is not all spent on the high school, that it would be able to be spent by the town. Is it earmarked in some way? Are there certain, I'm sure there are certain regulations around how it can be spent. And what if the town decides not to do this project? Can that money be used for some other kind of economic development for the town?
Okay, so this earmark, let's just call it an earmark. It's a congressional-directed spending earmark, right, through Senator Sanders. And it was written to cover the cost that was provided to us through the feasibility study that was presented to the town in July 2022 through the Fairweather Consultants and Greg Gossens, the architect. So the cost was what was given to us then, and that was presented as what we needed the money for. And that's what the money funded, based on the proposal and the cost. And we call that Phase 1 of this repurposing project, which literally is getting the building to a 21st-century energy efficiency and tenant-ready, all right? It does not cover anything beyond that. What I understand from USDA, because this is through a USDA Community Facilities CDS grant, right? Which is different, I mean, USDA has multiple different grants, but this one is specific to Community Facilities CDS, all right? And so Misty Senegale, Senegalee, said on our second webinar with USDA that if for some reason you accomplish what you need to do without spending the entire $3.1 million, meaning that you accomplished everything that you set out to do in that building, and you didn't spend it, no one's gonna ask you to return the money. But the money goes for that.
But the question is, if we decide not to do that, does that money go poof? Or do we have that money to spend on...
If you decide not to do it, then I don't, I mean, I have not asked that question to USDA. If we, if we're gonna have money not to do what we said we were gonna do?
If we decide to do it another way, maybe not, maybe preserve the whole thing or preserve some parts of it, does the money go away then? I mean, that's a question that needs to be answered.
I can specifically ask that question in our next interaction. But the very essential to this was also the proposal for which we were repurposing the building, because it has so much in the way of community services and economic development tied into it. So my guess is if you decide to do something else, it's a different conversation. It's a different conversation. And, you know, I'm not Senator Sanders, but the Congress passed it based on what we said we were gonna do and what that's gonna cost.
Return on, buy a new fleet of trucks. I don't see...
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Start over again.
Before you can have another question, can I do a house cleaning thing? I've got a couple of hands on Zoom, or just one, I guess. But I just wanna make sure of, some people came in late, so I just wanna make sure that the people on Zoom understand that they're taking questions from the room first. I'm keeping track of your hands all. And once the room's done with questions, then we'll move on to the Zoom questions. So I just wanted you to know. Okay, thank you.
Another thing that when, with accepting this grant money also puts the town into a different audit scenario. It's called the single audit, I believe, is that what it's called? And it's double the cost of what a normal audit is also.
Triggered by like the bridge projects, it's a dollar threshold.
It's based on, and that's only in expenses, not in income. So we'd have to expense $750,000 in a year to trigger the single audit. A single audit can cost upwards of $16,000 a year.
If you're dispersing it that much in a year, right? But this is gonna be spread out, my guess.
But we also have other grants as well that will be...
Yeah, it's a total package, it's not just one.
So that, that should all be factored into the additional grants that we write. We're gonna be doing a Northern Borders grant in the fall. So this is the first time this has been presented to me as an additional cost. But costs are what grants have to, you know, list, so.
Deb, you had a question?
Has the Select Board put any money in this coming budget to cover any costs? You know, if you take the building over in September, then the costs would go to the town in terms of winter maintenance and heating, you know, before any work is done. Is that in the town?
Not in this, not in the current budget that we just passed.
The target for taking the building over at this point in time is July 1st, 2025. The school board has drafted a preliminary purchase and sale contract, just like when you bought your house. And there are, that is one contingency that the transition doesn't take place for a year from July 1st next year. And the school would also continue to hold the responsibility. The high school has an underground oil tank, a 10,000-gallon underground oil tank that was installed when the building was built. That needs to be raised. Vermont does not allow that anymore. The school has taken on the responsibility that if there is any contamination from that, we're paid out of the grant. We're gonna raise that oil tank if we get to that point. But if there's any contamination, if that baby was leaking at all, then the school would take that responsibility, because that would deem it a hazardous site and that just, you know, puts up red flags all the way around the school. So they'll hold the responsibility for that. And I think those are the only two contingencies that we have on it at this point in time. They're holding true to the price tag of $1.
And the reason that decision was made is that the cost of $175,000 to install an interim above-ground external oil tank to remove the 10,001 was just cost prohibitive, and it didn't make any sense to do it on a temporary basis. So Jamie said, we'll cover the cost of removing it and we'll cover the cost of any potential cleanup if contamination is found. But he had just this last year removed two underground tanks from other schools, including our elementary school, with no contamination found. So he's feeling very optimistic that it's gonna be...
So, you know, when you, when you talk to the grant people, if you do amendments to the grant and they're pre-approved, I mean, you have a plan right now, but like say something comes up and you wanna amend it. Is there, in most federal grants, there's a process for amending and then getting permission and then changing the plan?
We'll be working directly with USDA. We have a specialist who is assigned to us. We meet with him at the school on the 17th, and we'll have a number of questions to ask. But a year ago, when we didn't get the first Sanders, you know, support money, Eric Law came down from USDA, and he said to us, well, with all good intention, you're pursuing a particular proposal, but we understand the uncertainties of the economy and life. He said, and so if this doesn't work out down the road, he said, we're not gonna come back and ask for the money. We want the town to go forward with the economic development and what is gonna work for this building, but the money is being granted for this proposal. So that felt, that felt to us like we are working with sympathetic people who understand the realities. We are a small town, and we're trying to move ahead into the future and do something with a building, a 33,000-square-foot building, to provide, to become an asset to the town, since it's right now being determined not usable for public education or not desired for public education.
In the very back, Danielle Lois.
Can I just clarify one thing first? We start the budget process in the fall. So if this were to happen in the year 25, we would have time to budget money for that in the year 25, because we do that budget in the fall. We finalize it sometime in December or early January to get it out to the town report. So we had discussed it in Budget Finance last year when we were doing the budget. But because there were so many different issues with what was going on, we didn't put any money into it this year. So this next year, it won't have it. But in the fall, we will discuss having a better idea where the town's going with this. We'll add money to the budget for whatever we feel we might need for that purpose.
Hi, so I guess, you know, a lot of, a lot of meetings that I've attended, we've, you know, the committee has run meetings. There have been unofficial meetings for kind of like PTO moms and that kind of thing hosted by younger members of the community and everything. And obviously, the conversation is about money, which I completely understand. Like, it does all come down to money, right? But then you have to ask yourself a question, why did Sanders? You were like, oh, it's a miracle, you know. Wow, Sanders gave us all this money. And it's like, it's really not that surprising, is it? Like, we live in a pretty amazing community. Why did these people spend four years and thousands of volunteer hours sitting on this committee, you know, talking about contamination and, you know, stuff that's not great, you know, coffee talk? You know, why did they invest all this time? Why did Sanders invest all this money? It's not a shock. This community is amazing. People choose this community because they see the potential in the community. And I, you know, I don't, don't sell it yourself short and say that it's shocking that, you know, someone would invest this much in the community. Not only are we worth it, and the future is worth it, but we are going to be a landmark example for the dozens of schools that are now sitting empty around the state of Vermont. They are watching this amazing tight-knit community with this incredible committee who's done all this work, and they are watching us to see what happens. And they want us to succeed, because if we do, when we do, this could be a turning point for all these small towns in Vermont. They have these buildings sitting empty, and why not do something with them? And if we, when we succeed, when...
Sanders mentioned that.
Yeah, when we succeed, this could be a major turning point in Vermont's future. This is bigger than just us. I'm so grateful for them.
And to bring that one step further, if and when this does take place, this committee is pretty much gone as far as they can. They will continue to be into the finance and all of that. But we would be looking for a brand-new committee that will help with the renovation of that building. So all those wonderful, community-minded people that have knowledge of building trades, be ready to step forward if you, if you want this project to succeed. We need your help.
Lois, back there, you had your hand up.
Obtaining other grants was often mentioned. My question is, is it possible to get grants from other counties?
My question is, are those grants going to require a sharing from the community? And is that cost sharing gonna be borne by the schools, by the school district, by the town, by the taxpayers? Who will pay for that cost sharing that often is required with a grant?
Are you talking about matching funds?
Matching, matching funds, yeah. So so the CBDG grant that we just submitted does include, will be included as part of the matching funds for the Sanders. The Northern Borders will also be included in the matching funds. So it's a tricky thing when you're creating the funding stack because, for instance, Northern Borders only has a cap of 80% of federal matching funds. But CB, but the ACCD or the Community Development Board does not because it's one step removed from the federal money. So that's why we're applying for half a million dollars to ACCD, the Community Development Board, that particular grant. So and all the grants have their own little idiosyncrasies. We have learned that they all have their own NEPA reviews. NEPA, again, is the National Environmental Protection Act. We have had Two Rivers and I want to just really praise Sarah Rate, who's been fantastic in all ways supporting us. We really have an angel there. So Sarah has been working with us to try to figure out the funding stack and to make sure that all of our i's are dotted and our d's are crossed. She's working with us on this new grant. She worked with us on our original planning grant. And she'll be helping us with the Sanders grant. So, you know, we're volunteers. It's true, we're learning as we're going along and we've learned a lot. But the support of these agencies and the people who actually really want this project to succeed has, is invaluable. So yes, there's matching funds associated, but they also in kind hours are included in our match. And we've had, we've already exceeded what we needed for the planning grant and volunteer hours. It's been a lot of volunteer hours.
So I'm hearing a lot of what I think of as best-case scenarios. So Vic, what's the worst-case scenario? What are the risks to the town? Because it's a huge amount of money and a gigantic project.
So risk would be, we don't get enough money to finish off the building in terms of renovation. Though we're a long way towards it, but you know, we might stumble along the way, which could then have further effect on delaying the occupancy. So those interim operating costs for heat, electricity, et cetera, between when the school stops having responsibility and the town, if it takes over responsibility, is a period, an interim period of there, which if it doesn't get the kind of tenant occupancy, those operating costs still have to be paid for. So if the school or rather the town, if it were the owner, it falls back to the town. Now, there are several ways perhaps to pay for it. One would be through taxes, others might be through campaign fund drive or through other grants, what have you. But that's a risk. Ideally, we'd like to be able to fill the building within a year. It could be more than that, nobody knows. Those, to me, are the two biggest risks. Maybe others can think of other risks out there.
That long-term, I'm sorry. That in long-term, you know, occupancy is is really the biggest risk we face, I think. You're absolutely right about that.
So just as my very smart daughter said, we need to look into the future. And since the high school building closed, I think everybody noticed less young people in our town and less activity. And I think that takes a toll. And in the meantime, a lot of young people who moved from our town to other states, Colorado, Utah, and so forth, are coming back, especially now that a lot of companies provide remote work. Our youngest son, he's a data analyst working in Boston. But he comes here and he can work from home. But that's not ideal a lot of times for a lot of people because, as we know, the internet service, like up the hill, we live up the hill. And it's like, we have two lives. But Daniel comes home, it's like, Mom, this is, I cannot work here. I'm like, well, there's nothing I can do because even if we wanted to CB, what is it, FC, that's the fiber. They would, they quote us $9,000 to get, to connect us from, you know, Brook Street. So that's not feasible. Please, well, unless Daniel pays for it. So that's a lot of people, we have a lot of interest in office space. Mostly because after COVID, as we all know, a lot of people can work remotely. And that's what we need. We need an influx of people, business people, young people, all kinds of all age people who want to be here and work here, having their own space. Not like in their in their old bedroom, you know, in a, with a limited internet service, but in the building that's like comfortable and, you know, other other business people sharing the space and so forth.
Yeah, the co-working spaces are successful because they share costs.
Yeah.
Nancy, you had your hand up?
Well, I'm just wondering if with all of the work that's going on, we don't seem to have heard too much about what it costs to just maintain that building, even now.
Yeah, Jamie's estimate was $60,000 a year.
And and that covers what?
Heat, electric, maintenance, internet, I suppose.
Insurance.
Insurance. Yeah, all this, the the routine cost of managing the building with its clunky old heating system that doesn't work properly because it controls or out of control.
One question that you said you're meeting with the the money people on the 17th next month.
Yeah.
One question that I'd be interested to know is if we go through this and we renovate the building with this money, is there any timeline that that puts a limit on at what point we could sell it to a nonprofit? Or we could sell it to some company that wants to do? It'll be a more attractive building once it's approved.
I have that from our April 4th meeting. It's an open question. It's a question we haven't gotten answered yet. So yes.
Because that would be good to know.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. But we've had, we've had two USDA webinars. One, the first one, which you had the same day, April 14th, we're all excited because we might get questions answered.
Six hundred people.
We're one of six hundred people on the web with Assistant Secretary of Agriculture just saying, congratulations. And then we had a later one at the state level, which was a little more informative, but not to the level of specificity like this question. So our next opportunity is we've been given a designated liaison from the Vermont Hampshire USDA office. And we're gonna be with him at the site on the 17th of May and then we'll get into more detailed questions. So hoping that's where we'll get an answer.
I think his name is Arthur Goutier.
Alex.
Right?
I think it's Alex. Alex.
Oh, Alex, that's right, Alex Goutier, yeah.
As the town considers this vote, and I would imagine that they'll get into the place where they start to take it very seriously and maybe seriously consider the purchase. Have you started to put some thought to who the general contractor would be for the project? Because it's not really a project that's appropriate for a community.
We're thinking about that right now.
A community board. I think it really requires a commercial focus.
Yeah.
Yep, oh, yeah, definitely.
And so has any of that outreach started yet?
Well, we're working with Greg Gosens, who does this. He's very experienced in all aspects of this and so.
Who does he, who does he represent?
He's his own firm. He's the architect who worked on the feasibility study. And he's working with us now. He'll, we got a extension to the planning ground, another $10,000 for him to be working to, on the architectural work. And so we.
And I've been in touch with some of the fellow board members who work in finance around the state looking for suggestions for developers for the project and really commercial real estate brokers. Because you're right, I mean, we're a bunch of volunteers, this is totally new. This is a big project.
We're looking for professionals. And if you have suggestions, you should submit them.
Well, I I just was thinking that in, you know, in the process of this, it would seem like you would need at least three at minimum contractors weighing in on what they actually do think the true cost of this particular phase of renovation should be.
We're looking for a upgraded estimate right now.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to suggest that that is probably a critical component of the decision-making around the town's yea or nay. Because it could come in twice that amount or three times or maybe even four times that amount. So I think it's an important thing to really understand before.
I I think there's a couple of things. There's, this this price is 3.1 is for the phase one, okay? Which is not building out the tenant's spaces. That's a whole nother phase two, right? So, yeah, and and Greg is working on more cost estimates for us based on current prices. And that's going to be reflected in the additional grants that that are being written.
Yeah, no, I know, I'm following everything you're doing really closely and just wondering, you know, who have the contractors been identified yet? And is there a way to expedite some sort of a quote for?
When you say contract, you're talking about a general contractor?
Yeah, I think just who is, who's gonna be the GC for the project and who will be the company that will, you know, basically, you know, implement everything that is hoped for in this first phase.
Well, there probably be multiple contractors depending on what phase of it is. There's gonna be a clerk of the works and there's gonna be a general project manager that will be working with all the contractors.
Yes.
This is complicated.
I do know that, yeah.
So to me, just to confirm something for me, all the figures that we're talking about all derived from the Black River study?
Correct.
Because that was a pretty limited study in terms of how much they paid them and that they did several other buildings at the same time. So, and will you have the new, the kind of thing that Annie's talking about? We have that new estimate before people vote on it?
He's working on it right now, Greg is. We, he, two weeks ago or more, he's been asked to do that. He's meeting with, at the school, I think, May 8th with Dick Robson.
Yeah, so just to clarify, what Rob's talking about is the school board retained an architecture firm called Black River Design based in Montpelier to take an assessment of all three of the school buildings, the high school, the two elementary schools and the combined school district, and to come up with cost estimates to renovate them and put in, into condition for either education or some other general unnamed purpose. And they they did that, they did a visitation to the building. They came up with estimates based on the site visit and cost per square foot in other projects and came up with with numbers, including the cost of demolition. Fast forward to 2022, Greg Gosens, another firm based in Montpelier, architecture firm, reviewed that study, visited the building and and agreed with what was put into that study and then updated based on, you're right, the inflationary factor since then that they have experienced in their own shop. And that's where the additional 35% on top of Black River came from. So that takes us to 2022. And as we mentioned earlier, going forward to a construction year of perhaps 2025, you have to boost inflation again. And then I think as Annie's suggesting, you know, is there another source of information that could give you perhaps even more accurate information, whether it's better or worse? But, you know, it'd be worth, it'd be worth knowing that before we make a commitment as a town. So I think that's very good advice.
I really, it's like, to me, it's like buying an old house. And a lot of people in this town have bought old houses. And, you know, a lot of times they're surprised. So that Black River study was a pretty, I mean, in my mind, fairly limited study in terms of the amount of money they paid them and how that was spread around. I would hope that before the town was gonna vote to buy it, would have a much more more updated and clear sense of just what the condition of the place was and what it would cost to fix it.
Yeah, the more recent architect, they put a contingency factor in of some X percent, which is typical for a project like this. But, you know, getting an actual bid. But, you know, to get a bid, you'd have to have architectural drawings.
So, you know. But that's sort of what I'm talking about. All these various studies, they're not, they've been fairly cheap. And for a 33,000 square foot building, all this complexity. I just think you want to have pretty clear, you know, you know, because, you know, it's all about money to me. And it's a huge project. And like anybody's ever lived in an old house, you know, you start looking into it and, you know, there's just things in there you didn't know about.
Well, we have had VHB looking into it. We just got through a very comprehensive environmental study of the building and the grounds. And in that umbrella assessment, Sarah Rate wrote in other things that are not normally umbrella, hazardous materials and et cetera. And there was nothing found in the building that raised a regulatory action. So we do, we learned that in January 18th, the 31st, we hear back from Caitlin Bane from the Department of Environmental Conservation. And she said, wait a second, but the arsenic standards are being elevated and you need to send your contractor back. Turns out, it was nothing in the building, was on third base of the baseball diamond. And that's been done and it did not raise to regulatory action. So I think we should all feel good that this building passed the environmental assessment. And that, by the way, Black River wasn't so sure about. And we did it. It took a couple of years because we're dealing with, you know, a shortage of consultants and just the time. It took two years to go through that whole thing. And I think it's been difficult for everybody to wait and wait and wait for results. But we got them finally. We finally got them and we're expecting the certificate of completion any day now.
I think the other.
Can I make, can I make a comment?
After, Zoom is gonna be afterwards.
Robert, right.
Robert, I think you came in a little bit late. I'm not sure that you heard the announcement that they're addressing questions in the room first and then we'll get to Zoom.
Well, you know, Kristen, you're not the controller of the.
Oh, wait, definitely. Robert, that's the rules that we set down. This is how we're conducting this meeting because it's a a large group, a full room. We're gonna deal with the room and then we'll go to Zoom. That's how we said it from the beginning. If you would have been here at the beginning, you would have heard that. So the woman in the doorway.
Yeah, they just haven't made up a long time.
Daniel, okay.
Rob, you asked about the worst-case scenario. Stand up maybe, so they can hear you. Oh, can you hear me?
No.
It's gonna take a while.
Help it up.
Oh, jeez. You're asking about the worst-case scenario. And I just, when I think of that, I'm thinking, okay, we've got two options that are the worst-case scenario. One is that we don't do anything at all and we just watch the building deteriorate over time. The other one is that we we demolish it for a million bucks or thereabouts and that price can go up too. And we all pay for that. That will go on our taxes, that will be a 20, at least a 20-year bond that we all will pay for. And we won't get anything out of it. So we'll pay for it in that regard and get nothing. Or we can watch the building just dissolve into the ground, which means that whole space can't be used for anything. And it becomes a danger zone because it's right next to the elementary school. And we just, we've talked about this many times. We don't want to end up with the same scenario that Hancock is dealing with, which is a deteriorating building that isn't able to be, you know, appreciated by anybody because it's falling apart and it looks awful. And this committee has been together for four years, working really hard. And there are so many really legitimate concerns here and so much talent that is required to really move this forward to what the town could use. So if there's anybody in this group or on Zoom or in town that you know about who has a skill that can come forward and be part of moving this forward because it is gonna take a lot of people to pull. because it is going to take a lot of people to pull it off. And it takes a lot of hours. And so far, what I've seen, being part of this committee for many, many years, is that anything that comes up, any of the questions that you have here have already been thought of by this group and are being addressed by this group. You've got some pretty talented people on this committee who are really digging deep to find the answer so you can know what you're voting on when you, when this comes to vote. Nobody wants anybody to walk in and scratch their head and say, I don't know what the hell this is about, but I don't like the feel of it. Or I think this is great and I want to be part of it. We want you to go in with facts. And so therefore, this committee is really digging deep to find that information, to get it out to the public. But gosh, there is so much to do here. And so anybody who has any kind of talent or interest, bake a cookie. I mean, just come feed us in the meetings, whatever. But come and be part of it because we want it to be part of the community right from the get-go. We don't want to wait until the door is open before everybody floods in and says, oh, this is fabulous. Come be part of it. Come join and do help out with the work because heaven knows we could use you. So worst case scenarios, we end up with a building that's rotting in place or we pay a million bucks in our taxes for the next 20 years for nothing, to have it carted away. That's my worst case scenario.
Question in the doorway, then we'll go to you.
Hi, I just want to thank the committee, the Repurposing Committee, for doing all the hard work for our community. I think it's forward thinking about the future of our town and where we are going as a community. I do just want to remind everyone right now that as of now, the Rochester Stockbridge Unified District owns this school building. And they are not meant to be landlords. They are meant to be educating our kids, talking about education. So something with this vote, I really want to make sure that we're either having it in the language of the vote of, that we present it to the town, that you will buy back this building and then maybe a second part to saying that we're going to take on these projects. I'm concerned, and I think the project is, has a lot of support, but I am concerned about if it fails, we're going back to putting this back on to ARSA, the Rochester Stockbridge Unified District's budget, which again, we're paying for it, but we're asking Stockbridge to pay for it. And we've been asking them to pay for their share for the last four years. And I think that has been a problem for our school boards in communication between the two towns to educate our kids in a more efficient manner because of this unnecessary burden of costs to Stockbridge. I think our town created the high school in sometime in the 70s. I think it's our responsibility as our town to take it off ARSA's budget and put it to the town regardless of what we do with it. It is our problem. It is, I think, a benefit to our town to do this project. And I just want it to be understood that we really need to get this also off of, you know, to the town and not for the school, school board.
The town too is not a landlord. So we're in the same boat as you are with that.
True.
And so, so this is a dilemma for the community. It's not really something that we're trying to push on one way or the other. The other thing with this building was it was a design from Georgia. Back when they built this thing, it was 1971, they started the project. I sat with my parents and listened to them bitch about this thing from day one at the supper table every night. My mother was on the, she was the treasurer of this building down there when they originally built it. The southern design on this building, the furnace is in the south end and the big part of the building is in the north end. So whatever you do there, it seems to me a smart move to spend some of this money would be to move the heating system to the central part of the building to get it so that you can heat the stupid thing as cheaply as possible. So, I mean, there are so many things that can go wrong when you start renovating this building. And I agree with Rob, whenever you tear into something, it's going to be an issue. And this building is no exception. So whatever we do, regardless of how we do it, it's going to be costly. And there's going to be funds that we're going to have to come up with regardless of how much grant money we have. Because there's going to be unforeseen things that we're going to see that we're not going to have money for. And to budget for this project would be a nightmare because you just, I don't think you could budget for something like this personally.
I think I'd just like to just follow up. Just my concern with that though is Stockbridge didn't vote to build the high school and Stockbridge just, and Stockbridge also doesn't have a voice in this vote.
And Rochester paid for this building when they built it. It was bonded back then and we were sole owner. And I agree that whatever happens down there, it should be the Rochester taxpayer that deals with it. It's not Stockbridge's issue. But if, if some of that building is, say, we decide that, the town decides they want to maybe razz part of it and keep part of it and keep it as a school, then Stockbridge would be owner to that piece of that. And that's the way I would view that as.
I can see that being very.
Will you identify yourself?
Megan Payne. I actually sat on the Rochester Stockbridge School Board for a bunch of years and actually through the Study Committee with Frank and Rob. I believe you're on the Study Committee as well. A bunch of years ago, but.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on something that Rob and Annie were talking about in terms of the reliability of the cost estimates and relate that to the timing of the vote. But as Catherine noted, we have five years to spend this money. We don't have to make this vote tomorrow, okay? We have plenty of time to get into reliable cost estimates, get them up to date and have numbers that everybody can look at and say, this is the best estimate of real cost that you can get. And that's going to take a little time, but I think what I want to convey is there's no need to rush to this vote. By the same token, the school has been very patient about this and needs to be able to get out from under it at some point, you know. The purchase and sale agreement draft says, you know, can take up to as far as July 1 of 2025. And I don't think we want to do anything that would blow past that. So the Select Board has yet to define a date for this vote and I know wants to get all this input before making that call. But I just want to make sure that we allow ourselves enough time to get as reliable a cost estimate as can be gotten.
Can I just follow up?
I just want to say something.
Could I just follow up with my comment to the whole thing is that, and to many that's been expressed already and absolutely 1,000% to the credit of Catherine's due diligence and the board and her ability to navigate all of these things and getting the money thus far. It is happening because we have a history of being able to get projects done. And I think the rigor of the conversation is very important at this particular point in time because I do think this is how it will get done. And I don't say any of those things to, as a barrier to this project being done, but actually, the more due diligence around this particular financial part, the more we will galvanize support at the statewide level because we will be seen to be doing it correctly. And so I feel like you've set a really good pace for that. And it's just a matter of us figuring out the way to keep in pace with that. And so to my previous point, the right contractor, the right GC, the appropriate budget so that we really do understand what we're going into because I think it would not be good for this project to be stymied halfway through. It would be the worst, that for me is the worst case scenario, is to actually see that get shuttered, no progress, and the town then looking at something that's half finished. So if that's, that's my worst case scenario. That really is. And so.
Quick, quick follow up to that too. Phase two. You know, the other thing I think would be helpful, the same general contractors updating number. And I know you don't have all the information at all really as to what the build out is going to be. Although I think I read somewhere that you had 5,000 feet projected for one, you know, for a particular 1,000 feet here, 1,000 feet there. It'd be great if, if there were a scenario, you know, not concrete, but, you know, we think, we would anticipate, you know, four 1,000-foot spaces, a 5,000-foot space. And find out what it would cost, again, an educated estimate as to what the build out, what phase two will cost.
We already have a breakdown with the Child Care Center.
Bill, there was a plan.
And we're getting those figures for other components as we are asking for letters of intent. And I do believe that we have to go a little further than letters of intent as far as the block grants concerned. They, they know we don't own the building and so that makes it difficult for lease. But you can have a hypothetical lease so that there's at least an understanding to the tenants of what's going to be expected in terms of, you know, square footage. And it's been an interesting process. It's only going to get more interesting. That really is kind of our number one priority right now is to work with the tenants, the potential tenants and to bring in other tenants. The co-working space, as somebody mentioned, I think it was, yeah, LaBeja. And it's true. I mean, the outfit over in Randolph is very successful because they, they share expenses that individual businesses by themselves cost quite a bit. But when you create that pool, you share expenses and it makes it a more affordable thing. Especially for people who don't necessarily want an office seven days a week, you know, so that there can be that kind of thing.
At this point, I'm talking about the cost of the build out or is that?
The cost of the build out is part of it. Like I said, we have, we have a cost breakdown now for the Child Care Center, right? So we actually have numbers. So I'm working on that grant separate to break, because there's a lot of money right now in the state to support childcare. We learned in the pandemic that it's an enormous economic factor. If a, if a parent can't work because they don't have childcare, that's a problem. So we've done multiple surveys of the, of the wider community and there is a strong interest in the Child Care Center. Only we're, Maureen Young, who's married to Jeff Gephardt, who teaches early childhood for the community college, she, she's creating the concept of an early childcare center that will also be a workforce development for people in early childhood and possible satellite for the community college in the building as well as wraparound family services, mental health and so forth. So we're looking at partnerships, partnerships to create some of this.
So those partnerships will, will help pay the cost of the build out?
Of sustaining the building. That's right.
No, I'm not talking about sustaining.
I know. You're talking about actually building out.
I'm talking about getting it so that the space can be rented.
Okay, so you're talking about building out the spaces.
Phase two, building it out.
Right. And so, like I said, I've got the.
You've got the 3.1 million for the envelope.
Yes.
And now I, I think it'd be great to know, and I know it's an educated estimate, what phase two will cost.
So we're starting to work on phase two. I'm, I have the funds for the, I mean, I have the, the figures for building out the Child Care Center. And that is really my intention with the Northern Borders Grant is to put that money, hopefully up to a million dollars, towards the building out of these spaces. That's what we're working on at the same time that we're working on this. We're looking to the future because we need to build out those spaces.
And I would such a good point.
The thing about this building in its 19.
I'd like, Burma's been very patient over here. Her arm's getting tired, so I'd like to let her.
I just, now I have a two-part question. One, what, what is the latest you might consider having the vote for this project? For the town to vote? What's the latest date? I know you said July something, 2025.
That's like the, back in, according to the purchase and the draft, purchase and sale. But that's really, but this would need to happen much sooner than that, I think. We're, we're looking at sometime this summer, I think.
Sometime this summer, the town will vote.
That's what we're, we're working towards. That's why we're gathered all here to really
It'll be a ballot vote.
Have the information out there.
Okay, now, my other part of the question is, the Select Board's here, Terry's here. There's a lot of knowledgeable people here. What do you foresee in the next five to 10 years that the town is going to have to spend money on that will impact our taxes?
Every.
And you give them, give them.
You're talking about things other than, like this more sewer system than things that Frank listed on April 4th.
The school has their own septic system. You've got to consider that. It's 50 years old.
It's not on the town?
No, it's not. And the town can't take it.
So when it was an active high school, was the septic system at risk of failing?
I have no idea. It had nothing to do with that.
Because no one has mentioned the, the high school septic system in terms of it being threatened. Are you mentioning it now?
Yeah, I am. It hasn't been used either for three, four years. So, I mean, you know, we need it.
It hasn't been that long since the tanks have been pumped.
I have no idea. I tried getting them years ago to build the tanks up and we would check them every year like we do the town ones. And the guy that was in charge of maintenance didn't want nothing to do with it, so I dropped it.
So we'll just put it on the list?
But I think you're going to have to dig some test holes and see what's going on.
It's probably fair to think that the septic field got the same tension as the rest of the building.
Yeah, zero.
It got pumped on a regular basis during the 80s and 90s. I will say that.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, personally. But it did, but I don't think before for, since, or recently, yeah.
I don't know. We need to check on that because we did have septic work done. We had.
On Neil Mitry School.
We need to check.
They did on Neil Mitry.
We need to check.
They each have their own.
Thanks, Amy. Yep, we'll need to check. Yeah. I just wanted to say to Bill, you know, I understand that you're separating what the tenant income is going to be from building out the spaces. And I'm trying to, maybe I was confusing in my response, but we are thinking about that now. We are talking to tenants. We are getting what their criteria is and then figuring out what the cost of creating those spaces are. And there's a grant that will be submitted in the fall that'll be geared towards that.
Jeff, you've been raising your hand back there for a while.
I would think that before a tenant or a positive tenant signs the dotted line to rent space or lease space in that building, that there would be some sort of architectural rendering or drawing, drawing to show what this finished space might look like.
Absolutely.
Because it's really ratty right now.
It'll be required, actually.
Okay.
And we have money built into the grant for that.
Great. And we'll be looking at.
That's part of the Sanders money.
We'll be looking at out of state possibilities rather than just local people renting that space because I don't think there's enough people locally to rent all that space and cover the operating costs for a year. That's just my thought, but it would be nice to have their names on a dotted line before we spend all this money purchasing. That's probably not possible because the code is coming out.
We would agree with you on that. Names on dotted lines.
I was just thinking before we start getting multiple questions from everyone here, maybe like the Zoom people want to be able to say some things and sort.
We're just talking about that.
Can I just ask one question about the design aspect of it? Whether that, whether the town could consider, or should the town people be thinking about an actual separate consideration for the design? And some sort of an agreement about the design direction? So, you know, you have one architectural firm that you've, that you've hired right now to look at the practical, you know, you know, division of that space. I would imagine that that might impact some of the exterior workings of that building as well. And I just think that it could, that there's good ways of doing it and maybe not such good ways of doing it. And it just seems to me that it should be a consideration for the townspeople to agree upon certain design directions.
She's concerned about aesthetic, ed function, form and function.
Something that manages to transform that building in a way that we would feel proud and happy. And also, you know, that it's moving in the direction of something that has flexibility. Should one. has flexibility, should one entity decide that in fact they don't want to renew their lease after two years or five years or 10 years, but that we have some design control over this, and I think it's oftentimes a thing that is not thought about or considered the minor aspect, but actually I think it's the major aspect of this in terms of a building that we could agree is something that, you know, feels like it has transcended what it is right now and moves us into the future in a really good way.
So that 50 years from now, we're not worrying about what Frank just talked about when this building was originally built and designed from a Georgia architect? Yes, I understand.
Yeah, and again, it's, you know, it's three, again, it's looking at multiple different directions and doing that due diligence around, you know, pretty much all of this. This is why this will take such a long time, because there is so much involved.
One thing I'm hearing here tonight, and I think, I think this is a vote in itself.
Yes.
On how to proceed forward. If the community is interested in moving this project forward, that should be the first vote that we have as a town, and then we move to, to buy it if that vote goes through that way. I don't know how anybody feels about that, but that's what I'm hearing from everybody, because if you vote yes or no to buy the school, are you voting yes or no to, for the plan going forward or not? So I think it's a two-tiered question that we need to address. I'm, that's what I'm hearing. I don't know about you folks, but.
I mean, we're really getting into the weeds here now, and one of the things that I thought I heard you all saying when you were setting up this meeting was that this, we were not going to accomplish in one meeting by any means. The concerns and the considerations that are emerging from this one meeting, so, you know, how many meetings are you considering to? And don't you think it might be a good idea to start separating out and identifying what the meetings might address going into the future?
Frank, why don't you do a show of hands now and see what?
That's not a good thing to do. Okay, let's see, I've got one more question.
Yeah, just, I think your, your last statement goes a bit to this, but the, what I'm trying to figure out is what actually are we likely to vote on this summer? Because part of what's holding things up, too, is like, we can't go get a general contractor bid until you know who owns the building, and you can't get tenants in or to sign letters of intent unless you know who owns the building. So at some point, we have to vote on, shall the town own the building?
Yes.
And then, you're correct, there's all these other details to work out, but, but at some point, we have to vote yes or no.
Right, and that's, that's what we're trying to address here.
That'll be the first vote this summer, as you're saying, and then there'll be some other vote after that about the plan?
You know, I don't know. What I'm hearing is, I think we need to vote whether we want to pursue the plan first, and then we vote whether or not to buy the building, or vice versa, whichever way you want to do it, but I, I think.
I think what people have been asking is a lot of detailed questions about how the plan will get rolled out, assuming that the town had already bought the building, which actually, we haven't even taken that step. So I'm, I'm one of these people where I'm like, I want to go, I want to do it, I'm interested in all these questions, and I agree there's risk involved if things go wrong along the way, but we can't do anything until.
That's also made it much more complicated in terms of navigating these grants, because it has to be the municipality that's been, yeah, so. So let's, we want to, okay, there's two more, and then we're going to start bringing in some Zoom input.
Okay, if we don't buy the building, what's, what would happen?
We stay with the school. It's a school building, so we'll just stay with the school.
So, just, just.
To that, though, the, the best opportunity for anything positive to happen to this building is through grant money, which is not accessible to the school.
Yeah.
So for the best opportunity for this building to move forward and be a community, anything of an asset to the community, we really need to access these funds.
Just a little bit of historical perspective. I've been paying taxes here since 1967.
You're dating yourself.
Yeah, it's all right. I'm pretty old. And, and there's a difference between what I'm hearing here. There's hope. Half of you think that, you hope it's going to go away, and the other half think it's going to happen. I, I choose to be optimistic, because I've lived in this town for so long, and I watched a two-person company called Oatmeal Studio succeed wildly in this town with a lot of employment.
Advanced illumination.
At one point, we had Conceptions Unlimited, which started three or four people in the little red schoolhouse on, on Brook Street. It grew to 80, 80 employees in this town. We have an LED, we have a number of LED companies here. You're not going to identify every single tenant every time. If we can raise, and I don't mean to be glib, if we can raise $1,500,000 to restore Pierce Hall, we can raise $1,000,000 on top of what we can get from all our friends in the government who we've been supporting all these years. That's the end of my editorial.
Kristin, you want to start bringing in some of the questions?
I would love to.
Thank you for your patience out there.
Oh, Kristin?
Yes.
Kristin?
Yeah, Martha.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, if, if, it would be okay if I mentioned something quickly? I would like to do that. One of the things I haven't heard mentioned this evening is another reason why, in my opinion, we should keep the building, you know, and, and keep it in good, you know, renovate it, whatever. I've been a longtime member of the White River Valley Players for almost 40 years now, and that building has the only auditorium in the whole valley area, and not only is it used by the White River Valley Players for theater things, and of course, by the school, but it's also been used for town meetings and all, you know, other town reasons. So that auditorium is, it's a real asset to that building. It's something that's, you know, not, you know, that, it's something that hasn't, I haven't heard mentioned, but I just think it's important. So just thought I'd mention it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to go now. I've been keeping track, and Andrew, is it Fersch? I'm not sure if I'm saying that right. You poor thing, you've had your hand up for over an hour.
You weren't saying that right.
All right, go ahead.
It's my fault for not being there, so.
It's okay.
Well, I'm Andrew Fersch. I am very soon-to-be 26 Brook Street resident, and people love hearing from the new guy in town, so I'll be really brief, and just say that I am one of the, the people who is very excited about signing that dotted line to reserve space to offer programming for middle and high school students. I will be an educator in town and have run a nonprofit for a number of years, where I offer programming to middle and high school students as well, so I'll be teaching elementary school, but would love that opportunity. Moving from the Portland area, I have been very involved in conservation commissions and the open space acquisition committee, and I would just say that, like, this to me, I mean, I, I know that there are a million factors that need to be considered, and, and I agree with the optimist view of, well, if there are enough people who are willing to work hard enough, that anything is possible, and that I would be one of those people who's more than happy to volunteer of my time, and my wife and daughter as well. And it's just a great opportunity to let, like, democracy be a democracy where residents get to make the choice about what happens to their own town, and I think that's really beautiful. And then the final thing I'll say is, my dad, originally from Iowa, and so he was a big Field of Dreams guy, and if you, if you build it, they will come. It's easy to nay, say, and say like, well, this could go wrong and that could go wrong, but you'll never know if you never did it, and, and if it's done well and everyone's very intentional about it, which I, you know, as someone who's, who's learning about it more and more, I'm very impressed with what everyone's doing. And I also, I'm done, but my wife, who's a writer, just wanted to jump on real quick and say, thank you all.
Hi, everyone. We're so excited to join your community, as is our three-year-old daughter, and I just wanted to quickly say that I also feel so excited about the potential for this project. I'm a professional writer. My first book coming out next year. I lead a lot of writing workshops and events, and I collaborate with musicians and artists, and I would also be so excited to rent a space in the center. And we're also just, with a young child, excited for any and all family and community opportunities for her as she grows up. So thank you so much. I look forward to meeting you all soon.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so the next one that I had on my list was Justin. I didn't have a last name, and I believe that he has left the meeting, so after that, and Jeanette, and Lemac, if you want to unmute yourself, you're welcome to.
I just had a quick question. No one's talked about the flooding issue, and I'm, even though there's some plans for mitigation, I don't know how you hold back an ocean, so assuming that it's going to flood again, and, and we're talking about investing, you know, upwards of several million dollars, if it's not three, it's six or 12, and we know it's going to flood again, I just, I guess I'd love to hear more conversation about that.
Yep, so we worked with an engineering firm to.
AMK.
Yeah, Tugoyzen King, a local engineering firm, to look at that very issue, because it came up, not only because of the practical matter of there has been a flood there, but also the building sits partially in the flood plain. The location that is below the 100-year flood plain is right in front of the stage of the auditorium. To think about the, when you're in the building, you go down, it's the raked seating and down in front of the stage, that's the lowest point in the building, that's vulnerable. And it's, the 100-year flood plain comes to about with a threshold a little bit higher than that, and the solution that was calculated by the engineering company was to install flood-resistant doors, and I say door in a general sense, it's what it is, is there's a frame on both sides of the door, and it was just installed this week in the auditorium emergency exit, and then there's a steel sheet that goes down into that, and it makes a watertight seal, and it's about three feet high off the ground, so it's, it's well above the 100-year flood plain level, and it's to be installed in two places, there and also underneath the band room where there's the double door, sort of garage area for the tractor and so forth. And that solution has been approved by the state and by.
FEMA, it'll, is being installed according to FEMA standards.
So that's what I would say in response. But it's, it's, we know it's going to flood again someday, and that's been installed.
Around the building, not in it.
Yeah.
And that's an approach, approach that's actually used quite a bit in areas that are prone to flooding, such as Florida. It's a, that's a standard use now, those floodgates, basically, is what they are.
It's what they use in Venice.
So the, the flooding issue and potential is also a reason why housing is off the table as an option for the building.
Right.
And then the last, are you, you want, you want to go on? The last person on my list was Robert Franks. If you.
You still there, Robert?
Hold on, I'm, he, I'm admitting him back in on his computer.
Okay.
It's all you, Robert, if you're with us. I'm unmuting him, asking him to unmute. He's not accepting, so, talk to you.
Going once? Thank you all for your concern and your input and excitement and attention, and this is not the only meeting we're going to have about this. We just figured we needed to, to start and get these topics out in the open and, and share the information and gather more questions, so thank you all for coming.
Thank you.